Mayor Matsumoto Wright.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Wal.
Here.
Councilmember Ryan.
Here.
Councilmember Sonmore.
Here.
Councilmember Murray.
Present.
Councilmember Woodard.
Here.
We're here tonight to interview seven council candidates. And it's just about 6:05. Maybe we can bring in our first candidate. And that person is... Do we go out and let Ricky know that we can... Oh, okay. So that person, I'm trying to get this to the name. Marcel Engel, Mayor.
Hi, here.
Hi, please, please sit.
Cool.
Hey.
Hello.
Hi. Well, we know you were very, very early coming.
Yep.
And you had the questions ahead of time, but welcome. Welcome tonight, and thank you for applying to serve in the city council. We have reviewed your responses to our written questionnaire and additional materials that you have submitted. And some of the questions are going to be overlapping, but we want to just hear it come from you and not on paper. You'll have 20 minutes to respond to the six prepared questions, so please manage your time accordingly. So if you get a little long-winded, we might remind you.
Okay.
That it's time to move on.
I wrote them all down.
Good.
So I have some notes.
All right. So Councilmember Mayor Pro Tem Wal, you have the first question.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Welcome. We're so happy that you're here and applied and looking forward to hearing about your thoughts about Mount Lake Terrace. What do you think are the important steps for achieving a balance between economic development and quality of life?
So I think Mount Lake Terrace is a family-oriented community. It's been static at around 20,000 or so people here for the past three decades. I do see that going up as Seattle begins to sprawl more, especially with the Linklight Rail coming here. So I think trying to keep this downtown area as, you know, shopping community-centered, maybe with some condos, that sort of thing, and build around the light rail station is important, and trying to keep the areas around a little bit more family-centered, the neighborhoods, rather than bulldozing, you know, homes for five, six-story apartments, trying to keep that a little bit more single-family homes.
Have to remember, too. So my question is, what are your thoughts... And you guys have it easy this time. We've never provided the questions before. So what are your thoughts... And I'm just, it's a humor moment, sorry, just a... What are your thoughts on city government spending priorities? How do you think... How should we go about reducing costs when times are lean? Or which services do you think we should consider as a priority?
That's good we got them beforehand, because I would have rambled a lot.
I know, I've never, ever had that done before.
So I think...
Twenty-two years.
I think thinking about it as trying to reduce costs when times are lean isn't the right approach. I think it kind of implies, you know, spending massively when times are fat, and I don't necessarily agree with that. I like the idea of trying to keep things as lean as possible and as smooth as possible. And that allows for savings for when times are tighter, so that you can still provide services when needed. But like, I also understand that inflation is a thing, especially right now. So costs will go up. I'm not a fan of increasing taxes, but it sometimes has to be done to actually do things.
Thank you very much.
So the next person will be Councilmember Murray.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Marcel, for being here with us tonight. So my question is, what role do you think local government should play in addressing diversity, equity, and inclusion?
It's a tough question, because I am split on it. Personally, I think the role of government is to try to stay out of it as much as possible, but I realize that people aren't necessarily the nicest around and need a reminder. Yeah, that's difficult. I think communities should be allowed to manage themselves. And from personal experience, the people that do misbehave along these lines are typically very shunned, and, you know, they kind of go away slowly. And I think the community should be doing that themselves.
Thank you. Thank you. All right, so next will be Councilmember Ryan.
Going through these quick.
Hi, nice to see you. What characteristics do you feel are most important for a good city council member?
So I think it's important to be engaged and to listen to people. I think it's also very important to understand when a mistake has been made, being able to admit it and work through it. It's one of the things that I do a lot as a software engineer. Like, we start designing along the wrong path, and a week in, we realize something is wrong, and we go, oh, hold on, we made a mistake, we need to backtrack. And it's very important not to dig into ideas and like, stay in your position, being open to other people to actually hear what they're saying. So along that route, like, being approachable and actually listening to, like, community members, if somebody brings a concern to me or to other people, like, actually listening to them and taking action, rather than hearing it and doing nothing.
Great, thank you.
All right, thank you. Next will be Councilmember Woodard.
Thank you, Mayor. I actually have the last question for you, which is, why would you be a good council member at this time? And a follow-up to that is, why are you interested in being appointed?
So I think all those good characteristics that I have, because I have to practice them daily. And like, I'm interested because I live here, and I don't plan on going anywhere. I've been here for about a year and a half. We bought our house a few blocks away, and I have an 11-month son, and I very much like being here. I like how my community is very, you know, family-centered, so I know my neighbors, we talk a lot. And I like being involved on that level. And I care about this place, and so I feel like I should be involved at least a little bit. I haven't been to meetings yet, and that's a thing that needs to change, because I've been very focused on the home life with the newborn. And I, like, one of my personal thoughts is, like, I don't have a right to say anything if I'm not involved. Like, I should be aware of what's going on, involved in the ongoings before I can complain about something. So I don't have anything to complain about. That's important, right? Okay? There's no issues. But if I were to have a complaint, I need to actually be involved before voicing it. So I like the idea of, you know, dipping my toes in for a few months to see how it's going, because I know it's about 11 months or so appointment. I think the elections are end of this year, so that is nice to be involved on that route.
Thank you. So do you have any questions that you would like to ask us?
I do. I also realized I totally skipped over a whole point that I wanted to make during the city priorities.
Okay, go ahead.
Come on out, too. Cool, yeah. So one of the thoughts I had as I was reading through the questions, as I was collecting, like, what I think about how a community should be organized. I very much like the idea that the light rail is coming here. That's important. And so one of the things that I think this area, not just Mount Lake Terrace, but like Seattle, the general Seattle area, does wrong is how we handle transportation. And I think the light rail is the first crucial step in making that change. I think that this downtown hub around the light rail station should be a hub where buses come here and leave from here. We don't have people just kind of traveling through the city. Like, I think that we should be able to come from the city limits to the hub and then travel from the hub on the rail somewhere else, rather than, you know, hitching a bus and taking it all the way down to Northgate and then doing something down there. I think that the hub here should be developed along that thought process to bring people into downtown and then spread out from there.
All right.
Yeah.
Did you have questions?
I did, yeah. The biggest one I had was, like, what's the most difficult thing that you all as a council have had to face? It's a tough one, I'm sorry. Okay, I can ask an easier one, give you guys a little bit to think.
We can answer that.
Well, the other one that I had was just, how much time do you spend doing council duties a week? Like...
I heard a almost comic coming out, so I didn't know.
It depends on each of us. For, you know, each of us have our own focus and priorities and spend more time on those priorities. And we, I think we also really appreciate each other and each other's perspective. And so, you know, we can count on one council member to be able to bring their perspective to the table. We all take advantage of their knowledge and expertise and information that they are aware of, and utilize that. You know, some of us are involved in a lot of committees and task forces and groups and things here in the community. Others of us are involved in our county and the region. And I think that is how much time is how much time you want to give to it, in a lot of ways. You know, there's certainly a lot of time that's necessary just to be able to prepare yourself and be informed on what, you know, when we're making decisions. So there's a lot of reading material. There's going to be a lot of studying time involved, but the more you're involved and the more time you spend in the beginning, you kind of, it makes it easier as you go along. You know, for the veterans that have been here for 20 years, you kind of know what's coming in a lot of ways. You know, you've been around, we've been around for a long time. So it really, I think the first couple of years is probably the hardest. Where you're taking, it's like a fire hose and taking it all in, but it gets easier. And then it just depends on how much time you want to spend involved in the community and involved in the county and the region, and how we're, you know, how we're making our voices heard and listening to the community and those around us, and incorporating everything that we bring to the table.
We have another person who would like to add to that.
And to add on to our Mayor Pro Tem, we have one council meeting a week, and it's Monday, then the next week's Thursday, next week's Monday, Thursday. So you got four meetings there. And then we work on a board called liaison. So we could have an arts board, a park board, we don't have a library board anymore. But, and then we have an extra meeting there, and usually a couple extra meetings. So four, so six meetings, sometimes long, sometimes short. Trying to think what else. And then we have some special, real special things from the county, like our Mayor Pro Tem was talking about, and it could be a Monday, a Tuesday, a Wednesday. And you can, you vote, do you want to do that one? Because some are in the morning, at 7:30 in the morning, some are at night, some are in the middle of the day. So we kind of all figure out where can we put our time. So if I'm working all day, I can't do any committee in the day. So I do my committees at night, I have two committees at night. So you're talking four, so six meetings. And then we occasionally have some special meetings at night, like tonight. And then some, once a year, we have a Saturday, what do you call that? Retreat, there it is. Okay. So just to give you an idea of some time spent.
Anyway, go ahead, Councilmember Woodard.
I'm going to address your first question. I heard it, did we hear it? I wanted to answer it, I'm going to answer it. All right, so I'm new to the council, I sat where you were, going through the appointment process, and if I would have known then what I know now, which is my way of saying, I think the toughest decision that we're facing is we have a very, very well-aged infrastructure, and those don't come free. And so trying to be thoughtful, trying to be forward-thinking so that we don't repeat this cycle again, that's what this council deals with on a daily-day basis. I think, I wake some of us up at night thinking about those, because that's just a natural process of a city. And that's just where we find ourselves in this point in time. But that's also coupled with things you've already pointed out, a lot of growth that's coming, so making sure that you're being thoughtful about who's already here while planning for who's coming. Between those, I would say that that's probably going to be the toughest pieces of the puzzles that you're trying to solve, but it's a puzzle every day. So if you like puzzles, you're in the right place.
Okay.
Councilmember Sonmore.
Is not kowtowing down to somebody who's trying to bully you. So I've had to learn how to speak up, which took me a lot of years to do. I had to learn how to have my own mind and look at the facts and data while I made a decision, and not somebody say, well, I'll vote for you if you do this, or you do that, or I'll give you money to run if you do this or that. I think you have to be your own person, and I liked a lot of things you said. You were very open and honest with that, and I think that's a good characteristic to have for a council member, is to have your own mind and to love your city, and so, and thank you for being here.
Okay.
All right. Anything else you have?
I didn't have any more.
All right, well, thank you so much.
We kind of trucked right through it. A few minutes is spare. Cool.
Congratulations on your baby.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, and very nice meeting you. We hope to see you again. And if, and remember, too, to apply for boards and commissions, too, if, you know...
Yes.
Absolutely. There's some really neat boards out there, too.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, I should add to that. Let me pull it up on my computer, I guess.
Okay, I'll see you tomorrow.
I guess he had a couple more minutes, didn't he? Yeah, he did.
Yes. Oh, he's standing, he wants to come in. Are we? Okay, you're still coming in, can you see? It's a hook at me. Yes.
I mean, it's a fine area, but it's huge, and it's a fresh spot, and I can't get it back, or it's really, really rough.
I mean, it doesn't matter how many times I'm flying into Seattle, I still... Yeah, it just has to be...
Yeah, that was odd.
So, I think it can, I think it's like, it should be shorter, I was like...
Right. Well, welcome. I'm going to thank you for applying to serve on the city council. We have reviewed your responses to our written questionnaire and additional materials you have submitted. And also, if by any chance you don't make it, please, we have a lot of boards and commission openings. And this is a great problem to have, to have so many people wanting this position. You will have 20 minutes to respond to the six prepared questions, so please manage your time accordingly. And our first one is going to be with our Mayor Pro Tem Wal.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and Amy, welcome, excited to have you here. So you know growth is a big issue here, and we've got to have, find that balance between economic development and quality of life. Tell us your thoughts on how we do that.
So, that is a great question. I think it's a two between economic growth and the quality of life, but kind of hand-in-hand. One goes down, the other usually follows with. So I guess I'd want to have a better understanding where our community, the focus of the economic development is. How do we, as a city, as a community, are we defining quality of life? How is this being measured today? I will say that with all of the transit work that is going on in our city, and as a result, a lot of the development of the retail and housing that's going on, it does seem to start in the right direction with that balance.
Oh, sorry, I heard you. Isn't it now?
Yeah, we do it all the time.
So I was saying, with all of the transit work going on, I think it's bringing in that balance of, and the positive flow of economic development and quality of life with the retail housing, meeting that balance. The new transit allows for folks with commuter jobs easier access to many forms of transit options, allowing us a lot of diversity in the variety of our residents, whether it's also new families, single working people, older generations looking for an easier community and a level of living, as well as opportunities for new businesses to come in and show their presence, and allowing us to benefit from that.
Very good, thank you.
Hi, Amy, and I remembered for once.
The red means on.
I always forget. So I'm Laura, it's nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you.
My question is, what are your thoughts on city government spending or end priorities? And then how should we go about reducing costs when times are lean? Which city service do you consider a priority?
So what are the top spending priorities right now? Are we looking at maintaining areas? Are we looking at growth? I always feel that education and infrastructure is without a doubt one of our top priorities, because without that, there is no real quality of life, no potential for that growth and development. Schools, especially as they're the ones that are developing the minds for our future, whether they're going into local... whether they're going into local business, local, national, global, whether they're going into the government sector or wherever they may end up, they're needing to be the minds of our future and we're relying on them for that. Partnering with the schools, I think, is a good priority, again relying on that education piece, promoting the schools. I think, from a very biased opinion, that we do have a great school system. I think all the others are more as extras and nice to haves. I will mention that I think the road maintenance this last snow season did an amazing job keeping our roads clean and safe. I think it's probably the best it's ever been in my time here in Mal Lake Terrace. I will say, though, that the aftereffect of it leaves a little bit less to be desired, so however that could be prioritized, whether it's looking at a new schedule on how that flow occurs, or money needed for having our little pockets from snow tires and the gravel that kind of stick around a little bit longer.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Amy, welcome. So my question is about what do you think the role of local government, what role do you think we should play in addressing diversity, equity, and inclusion?
So, I do believe that our community is very diverse as it stands. I would want our government to continue to allow businesses to settle here that promote equality and that do not discriminate. I would want our government to endorse, have our members attend local events that support these inclusive events, activities, workshops, fairs, developing other areas where a variety of our communities can attend, promoting them. And I do realize I missed two of your questions, so I apologize. Okay, thanks.
Hi.
Hello.
Nice to see you.
Yeah.
What characteristics do you feel are most important for a good city council member?
So I will say, I did have fun with this answer, because it was, it was a very fun one to do. First, a good listener, someone who's willing to engage in conversation, have empathy, someone who's willing to understand getting to know voters' residents' concerns, even when they come from maybe your own personal opposing views, having an open mind, being impartial, not afraid to ask questions. I've learned that in all realms of my life, is at a certain point, you just have to speak up and ask questions instead of pay the penalty later. Be someone who's approachable and have flexibility.
Thank you, Mayor. I have the last question for you.
Okay.
Which is, why would you be a good council member at this time, and why are you interested in being appointed?
So, I feel that I do carry the qualities that I mentioned before, but who better than an average community member? Someone who's your neighbor, a wife, a mom, an employee, working mom, a concerned citizen who's willing to devote some of her extra time to learn and participate in the council process and agenda. My previous job I had, for lack of a better term, I was kind of a middleman between our business customer and our development coding team. And so I would spend a lot of time listening to the customer requirements, converting that into a language when code would come in and they were very tucky, to kind of be the middleman to ensure that both ends were met, we were kept on schedule and under budget, but at the same time, the code people weren't thinking, here's a quick shortcut, or I can do it this way, but it's not what the customer wanted, so kind of helping bridge that gap between the two very different extremes. So I think a council member is kind of like that, where you're, you know, you're working with the community to meet their needs, yet you're also dealing with the requirements within the spectrum and the available resources of the government, the city manager. Go back to my other two questions that I did forget. Well, I will say that specifically with about reducing costs when times are lean, I think everyone has gone through that period now with COVID. I think I still experience that every time I go to the grocery store and try and see if I can just get under that dollar amount again, and can't. So it's really not a matter of eliminating areas or activities that need to occur, it's more a matter of prioritizing the ones that you have in, in front of you, and reassessing what is best for the community voice needs at the time versus those that are the nice to haves. So, it's more about being effective while being efficient, whether the lean comes from being financially under constraints, if there are resources, not enough resource to accomplish the task, so using those at hand to help prioritize at that given time.
Mm-hmm.
And I guess my question then, if we do have time.
We do.
For you, then, what are you looking for from another member of your council?
Does anybody want to answer that?
And do you enjoy what you do?
I know I do. Anyone else?
I don't mind if anyone else isn't going to.
Go ahead, go ahead, Laura.
So usually, we're given directions on what to look for when a candidate comes in and different things like that. And over the years, we've been kind of told, get somebody who would vibe with you, who kind of may have the same ideas, but may also have opposing ideas. And so, what I'd like to see in a council person is somebody that loves our community, wants to help improve our community, or what foundation we already have here. And then, do we like our job? Yeah. You know, sometimes it's very hard, like years ago, we had on the fireworks, and this whole, we were just talking about how full this room would get, we were in here when it was our old city hall, and the room would be full, or we are over in our new other temporary one, but the room would be full, and half of the people would want it and half of them didn't, and you would be stared down, you'd be cackled at when you walked to your car, you know, some people didn't talk to us for a year. So you have to learn how to kind of balance that, and you said it in your question, is you have to assess what's best for your community, and I really think that summed it up. I think you did a really good job.
Anyone else?
Okay, go ahead.
No, I think Laura, yeah, Laura hit it on the head. I mean, you know, I think it's important to find somebody that we all can work with.
Yeah.
And, and I think generally, you know, is agreeable, so even if we may disagree on an issue, we can work through it and get past it, and, you know, I think this council is very good at, you know, approaching each issue individually and putting it behind us once a decision is made, regardless of where we stand on it. So I may disagree on what the council does, but at the end of the day, we've made the decision, we move on, and we, we still respect each other after the end of the day. I think that's going to be an important quality in, in the next council member. I, I think, you know, and, and I think bringing different perspectives to the table is important, too. You know, I think it's important for us to be able to hear, and that's part of what's great about our community, is, and as you point out, we're a very friendly group of people, you know, for the most part, we get along really well, we don't have, you know, a lot of divisive issues driving wedges between everybody, and this council's the same. And I think, you know, bringing a perspective to the table that we can all, to be able to take the time to understand, and I think that's important, you know, for the council member that's leaving, that left to create the vacancy, you know, brought, was very thoughtful and very, you know, brought a great perspective to the table, and, and we're going to miss that.
Yeah.
But that's, that's part of, you know, we move on, and we're going to find a new, great, exciting individual to fill that gap and bring their talent to the table. So, yeah.
Great. Do you have any other questions?
Yeah, I think that's it.
All right, well, thank you very much for coming tonight.
Yeah, well, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, have a good evening.
You too.
Try and stay warm, it's really cooled out.
Did you want to take a break, or, we have Mr. Barnes sitting right there, and you can have your, your 15 minutes of fame.
Is there anything, Jennifer, to be published or scheduled? Do we have to stick to that?
No, the next person will come at the time that they're going to come. Yes, please do. We're all forgetting to turn it on.
Well, back in the day before the epidemic, you know that I was with you a lot.
Oh, yes.
Through many things, and, and as you, most of you know, I tried several times to get onto council, 2013, 2015, and 2017. And I don't know if I'm the person that you want, but I'm here, and maybe I'll present some perspectives that can be useful going forward.
Okay, well, we just want to thank you for coming and applying, and we've reviewed all the responses and our, to our written questionnaire, and any additional, additional materials that you have submitted. And again, like you've heard me say, if you don't make it this time, there are other boards and commissions that are, apparently, a lot of them are, are being open this year. So you'll have 20 minutes to respond to the six questions, so please manage your time accordingly, and the first one is by Mayor Protem Wall.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and Stephen, welcome. Thank you for applying and coming back in front of us today. We're excited to hear your thoughts about the council, and starting off with all the growth that's coming, and how we're going to manage that, and, and how do we balance that economic development with our, with quality of life over the next few years?
Well, as most of you, I feel that our town is really a wonderful place to be, and has a lot of potential. Certainly, the vision for a good downtown was important. We've spent many hours on it, both you and, and we as citizens reviewing all of that. I think we have certainly a, an important area in terms of where we stand in the Puget Sound area, and I think that's one of the reasons it was important that we focus on our downtown and the possibilities there. In the meantime, we have been developing on the fringes, there's lots and lots of developments, as we all know, if we go down 56th and over a block or two, lots of things going on. But downtown seems to be, at least from what I hear, and of course, you have different information, but what I hear is just pretty dead, you know, the, the vision stated in 2019 of 12-story buildings, we haven't gone beyond six. You know, just the two that the, the investor did there at Arbor Village and 236 across the street, is the main thing we have to show for, since 2007, in terms of, in terms of our downtown. And so maybe we need to look at that again, and I have a background in real estate, and that's one of the reasons I have for this whole time, at least when it was publicly, you know, publicly available to do so, I've, I've been involved and interested in what decisions you make and where we're heading as a city. I think that we should maintain some of the good things that we have. We have a great police department, we have utilities that work, we have roads that are, that are in good repair, I mean, I compare that to Seattle, then, boy, we shine. And, yeah, so there are some things there that are important to continue to, to look at and to make sure that we're spending the citizens' money as, as well as possible. Yeah, I think that's what I have to say on that.
Very good, thank you, Stephen.
All right, thank you. Next is Councilmember Sandmore.
Thank you, Mayor. Hello, Mr. Barnes, good to see you again.
Thank you.
My question is, what are your thoughts on city government spending priorities? A, how should we go about reducing costs when times are lean? And B, which city services do you consider a priority?
Okay, some of that I've already mentioned. Of course, I'm not privy to the details of the direction of spending the city currently undertakes, but as you, most of you know, I sat through many hours of going through the budgets and going through the details, and I am a quick study when it comes to those kinds of things. What I do know is that as a city, we're requiring more and more of our citizens' funds, and I see that simply in my own bills, that have gone up and are continuing to go up, partly as decided, you know, a number of years ago, but we see that it is not a pretty picture when citizens spend several hundred dollars for utilities each bill. How should we reduce costs? I'm willing to look at programs to see where costs can be, where cuts can occur, or delay expenditures that can be delayed, and of course, we know there are some that cannot, but there are some that can. What city services do I consider a priority? The safety of our citizens is paramount in an age of growing homelessness and civil disobedience. Good paved roads, dependable police assistance are paramount, and considering the high increases in taxes levied by our city, expenses should be carefully reviewed, and if reasonable, key rollbacks should be considered. Finally, we need to grease the engine of downtown development while it is still in our hands, and I, and I say that because I understand that a while back, the county told you, you need to increase your population 5,000, and that's what led to the, the initial push to develop downtown. All right.
Thank you very much.
All right, thank you. Also, Councilmember Murray, you're next.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Stephen. So my question is about the role that you think local government should play around diversity, equity, and inclusion.
I think that we should assure the public that we are even-handed. That should always be our target, but I do not see a reason to bend to activists.
All right, thank you. So our next question is from Councilmember Ryan.
Thank you, Mayor, nice to see you. Do you go by Stefan or Stephen?
Stephen.
Stephen, okay, thank you, Stephen.
That's what my mother called me, so that's what I've called.
I like to be correct on that. Nice to see you again, it's been, I think I saw you once last year, and thank you for coming in and stating your opinions with the council then. The question is, what characteristics do you feel are most important for a good city council member?
Well, I think a caution towards a yes. That is, an investigative spirit, readiness to review, and quick to hear our citizens are important, but in this particular time, in the time we're living, where our light rail is about to open, we have to have a strong desire to see the city's vision met, or at least adjusted if necessary. That is, on the three, willingness to question what is presented, even if you afterwards accept it. Being a good scientist, willing to believe but ready to object. And being a team player. However, being a team player does not mean that you always vote yes because you know that the others are voting yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Next is Councilmember Woodard.
Thank you, Mayor, and as you know, I have the last question, which is, why would you be a good council member at this time, and why are you interested in being appointed?
As I mentioned at the outset, I ran for city council in 2013, 2015, 2017. I didn't run in 2019 because I retired. At first, I wanted no downtown core, as many citizens agreed. Then I allowed that the core was integral to our proper development as a young city. And frankly, I see now that it's important, as we look at the light rail coming in, that we do what we can to improve that part of our vision. Now, having said that, I would note that other cities who have gone in the direction that our downtown core would indicate have also adjusted their streets to have, well, our neighbor Linwood has six lanes in their downtown area. And another place to look would be Ballard. Ballard has two lanes in each direction, four lanes, in that area that they built up, five, six, seven stories. We have not done that. And so we need to assess whether we have given developers what they need so that they would come in and develop. I think the coming time should be a time where, as a council, we should meet with developers and find out why they haven't jumped on the great opportunity that I believe we are. And so, having been interested in the real estate aspect of our city for a very long time, and I have spoken many, many times before you in these issues, I feel that this is a great time to have someone like myself with you, asking questions, and seeking to get the consensus that will let the buildings arise that we feel should or need to be there, given the fact that we are equal to Seattle in terms of access once that light rail opens. Thank you.
All right, thank you. So our last question is, do you have any questions that you want to ask us?
Yes, what are we doing to sell our downtown?
Would someone like to answer that?
I'm looking at him. In a good way.
Right. What are we doing? Well, obviously, if you're going to ask me, not enough. No, I mean, I think you're right. I mean, we need to do more to achieve our vision. I mean, we have a great vision, we have a great dream for what we can become, and we're making progress. You know, we are seeing some of that development coming, and seeing some of that growth, and I think we're shaping that growth the way we want to see it shaped, but I think we need to be doing more. We do have a small marketing program. Stefan's done a great job, I think, in developing and selling Mount Lake Terrace in a limited capacity. I'd like to see us doing more. And the more we're able to achieve the economic development dreams that we have, the more revenues we're going to be able to have to be able to provide the services that are important.
Absolutely.
And so, you know, I think we're, and part of the challenge is, of course, A, I mean, there's always, what's that movie, the big movie? Always everything coming all at once and everywhere, or something like that, right? I mean, there's, you know, there's always so many different things and needs that we need to address.
Yeah, the city council has a big playtime.
Yeah, and so that's a challenge. And so, and trying, and being a small city with limited revenues and resources makes it a challenge to be able to do it. But we have, I think, a lot of excitement behind, and I think there's a lot of, and part of it is that there's, we have buy-in from the council and the community, and I think we all generally want to achieve that vision and dream. Now, we just need to be able to take the time and focus our resources to be able to achieve it.
Well, I certainly wish that for Mount Lake Terrace. I think the significance of the light rail cannot be overstated because the truth is, Seattle is equal to us once that is open. There's nowhere that people can go that they can't go to us instead. And finally, from 2017, vote Stephen Barnes. All right, thank you.
All right, do you have any other questions?
No, I'm pretty good. I know you have a big job as a city council, and I think that maybe I could add something to it. It all depends on what your priorities are as to whom you choose.
No. Thank you very much. So did you, did you want to take a break until 7:20? 20 minutes.
Good evening.
Have to turn ours on.
Hi, YouTube.
Okay, well, thank you. Thank you very much for applying to serve on the city council, and we have reviewed your responses to our written questionnaire and additional materials that you have submitted. And again, I'm reading the same thing to everybody. Please, if you don't make it this time, we have boards and commissions that are open, but you're already on a commission, so. I have another.
I'm enjoying the planning commission, thank you, Mayor.
So you have 20 minutes to respond to six prepared questions, so please manage your time accordingly. And our first question is going to be from our Mayor Protam, Brian Wall.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and Rory, welcome, and thank you for applying, and we're excited to hear what you have to say about Mount Lake Terrace and city council and whatnot. And winter is coming, growth is coming. How are we going to balance quality of life with the economic development?
Well, thank you, Mayor Protam, and it's an honor to be here in front of you, and I'm, you know, this question is something I think all of you know that I think a fair amount about. You know, even probably prior to my time on the planning commission, I showed up here during the Town Center process, and I think this is really a key question. How we, you know, I think some residents have a certain view of the city depending on how long they've been here, and I think this is something that attracts folks here. It's a working-class place, it's an approachable city, and there's good, strong community here. We're already seeing growth, you know, happening, you know, piece by piece in Town Center. But in terms of, you know, getting that growth right, I think is something that will require us to reopen the Town Center plan. You know, it was passed by many of you. I think everyone here perhaps voted on this latest iteration, and it was, you know, recommended to you with the caveat that it would be a living document. And there are, you know, as we see large projects, you know, submitted to the city in Town Center, I think we need to view those, or see those things, and, you know, get more engagement, get more input about what we're, you know, what we're thinking we want the feel of Town Center to be, and what the experience is for residents, you know, in the coming, you know, five years, coming 20 years and beyond. I will say that I think growth is happening commensurately in the rest of town where there's either single-family zoning or a mix of other land use. And, you know, getting the balance between development and economic sort of vitality and quality of life, I think is, requires a lot of intentionality. I think we need to talk about, you know, what amenities, growth and development will bring, where we want that to happen. You know, we talked about Town Center, but, you know, the northeast side of Mount Lake Terrace, you know, up near the high school and that neighborhood, very near to Linwood Link Station. And I think that's, you know, whether it's there or the 220th corridor and the, you know, the density of, you know, light industrial jobs that are there, I think across town and as it is across the region, I think we need some, you know, thought and leadership there. We also need, you know, resourcing for, you know, the city staff who will hopefully convene and, you know, facilitate the planning that goes on there. So I think the need is really great. And when it comes to, you know, the quality of life question, you know, whether we're experiencing construction and construction sort of impacts in neighborhoods, I'd like to see more robust outreach from the city. And, you know, the planning commission, for its part, is looking at, you know, what our neighborhoods are, what their identity, you know, is, or what residents want, you know, their parts of town to be. And I think beyond that, you know, we need to make sure we're impacting, you know, as best we can the development types. We're investing in, you know, the parks and public infrastructure in those spaces, and we're making them safe, walkable, bikeable, you know, and so on. So I think that's, I will leave my answer there, but I hope that answers it to your liking.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Sandmore.
Hello, so my question is question number two. It's kind of a couple parts here. So what are your thoughts on city government spending priorities? How should we go about reducing costs when times are lean? Which city services do you consider a priority?
Thank you for the question, council member. You know, I will give this a quick caveat. You know, when I first became aware of sort of Mount Lake Terrace city government, it was probably even before I was a resident, working at the state legislature. And I recall hearing the city manager speak to how well the city managed through the Great Recession, you know, relative to some, and how it, you know, tightened its belt and, you know, got through. And I think, you know, the city should be commended for retaining its high level of services, you know, whether it's passport services or, you know, of full service, you know, public works department, et cetera, et cetera. When it comes to reducing costs during lean times, I'm not a fan of across-the-board cuts. I think they have to be, you know, intentional and discussed and well-thought-out. And, you know, we really need to think about how they're impacting folks. I think, you know, even during these more flush times, council has made decisions that are still somewhat controversial, but probably responsible when it comes to, say, utility rates. You know, those are hard discussions, and whether they're, you know, raising revenue or cutting costs, they, you know, I think it comes down to hearing what residents value, which residents are, you know, disproportionately impacted by certain cuts. And so, to be, you know, specific, I think, you know, the core city functions are really important, but I think, you know, a potential gap in, you know, city government over the past few years is really, or maybe gap's the wrong term, but, you know, an opportunity that has been a bit under-resourced is outreach and engagement in some parts of the city. That's something I hear from folks I know and who I, you know, see on social media or in civic events. And so I think, you know, protecting the interface between residents and government should be something that's maintained. I also think that, you know, the Parks Department, or Parks and Rec are really beloved in the city and beyond. I know, you know, my sibling brought my niece here, you know, to go to the pool because that's, you know, and, you know, people around the region know that we have a really kid-friendly pool. And I think, you know, making sure we're protecting, you know, kind of what glues this place together is quite important. So I'll leave that question there.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so our next question is going to be by Councilmember Murray. Oh, hold it, am I in the right one?
You are.
Councilmember Murray.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Rory, nice to see you. So I'm curious about what role you think local government should play in addressing diversity, equity, and inclusion.
Thank you, council member. I think the city should be paying close attention to DEI, and, you know, be it around issues that are topical in the past few years, certainly policing, public safety, how law enforcement shows up in community. I think that it goes beyond that, and, you know, the list is long as it should be, but there needs to be, again, to bring it back to how the city interfaces with community. I think we need to have that space for discourse. I think the city has a, you know, a responsibility to be a convener around certain issues. I think the city's current DEI commission is a great addition to the city's board, or array of civic boards, and as advisors to you on council, they are, they should be listened to, and they should be included where appropriate. And I think that should be said of, or can be said of all of the boards and commissions, but when it comes to DEI issues, I think the way that staff interfaces with community, I'd expect that, having been. I'd expect that, having been a municipal employee myself in previous years, that staff have appropriate DEI training. There's, there should be, you know, DEI training for council, and there should be, you know, open and robust community conversations about the issues in front of us. So yes, it should absolutely play a part in DEI conversations.
Thank you. All right, thank you. Next, our councilmember Ryan.
Thank you, Mayor. Nice to see you, Rory. What characteristics do you feel are most important for a good city council member?
Thank you, councilmember Ryan. Good to see you as well. I think, you know, to start, it's pretty simple. You have to show up, you have to engage with community. I think, you know, you've got to enjoy, you know, even having hard conversations, but I think, you know, the job is to, you know, be a representative. You know, you're, this is a legislative body, and it requires you to listen, to understand perspectives across town and across the region. And, you know, I think it also requires, you know, work on oneself. I think, you know, viewing this as an opportunity and a privilege, I think, you know, it requires some self, or, excuse me, requires, you know, seeking out opportunities to learn and to understand, you know, the complexities of, you know, city fiscal considerations, you know, learning about what's going on in school, what families and kids are going through in town, what, you know, underserved communities, especially renters and people who are, you know, might be out living rough on the streets are going through, and, you know, being thoughtful and, you know, taking, and also yet taking a stand where you, you know, have conviction and have, you know, put in the work. I think, you know, there's a sort of a confluence of things that make a good local government representative or councilmember. It's kind of all of the above, but I think it requires some dedication and discipline, and, you know, being able to communicate back to the community is, I think, quite important as well. Know that it's often also a lonely job, so it takes, takes a bit of, you know, futsba, even when you're sort of weighing issues and, you know, might be uncertain or, you know, or taking, taking things in still. So it's, I think, a good leader is a mix of lots of things, but to have a good head on one shoulder and shoulders, and to, you know, have, you know, put the work in on all the issues in front of you is kind of the, I think, the gold standard. And, you know, realizing that we're all humans, I think it's something that you also have to do together with the rest of council. It's hard to get where you're going alone, even if you have the best of intentions and are, you know, well-liked.
Rory, we've got five minutes left.
All right. Thank you for the warning. Yeah, so I'll leave that one there, councilmember.
We have, we have just one main question. The six is optional. So councilmember Murray, I mean, Woodard?
Woodward, actually. Kidding. Thank you, Mayor. I have the last question. Why would you be a good councilmember at this time, and why are you interested in being appointed?
Thank you, councilmember. That's the question of the night. I am, I think I'd be a good councilmember for a number of reasons. I think I've, you know, shown a real strong interest in civic life, local government here in Mount Lake Terrace. I enjoy working on city issues, whether they are here in this room, you know, out, you know, pulling invasive species in the park and listening to my neighbors, or, you know, tracking what's going on down in Olympia at the legislature. And, you know, I think I can, I could go on. I am aware of where Mount Lake Terrace sits in sort of the regional setting, whether it's infrastructure services or sort of other dynamics. And, you know, I want to be here because I care. I moved here for a reason. You know, I saw a lot of potential, and I saw a community that, that, you know, I could see myself in, and think that that's broadly the case for, you know, most people live here, be they, you know, multi-generational families or renters. I'd hope that was the case, and I want to continue doing the work. I want to, you know, talk to neighbors and see what they're thinking about, and how you can be a, you know, problem solver for your neighbors and with your neighbors.
Thank you. So we do have two minutes left. Do you have any questions that you want to ask us?
Well, I'd throw that back at you. I think I know the process well enough, but is there anything that I mentioned tonight that you have follow-up questions on?
There. You do? Go ahead.
Oh, thank you. Being on the council, how's your time commitment for being here essentially once a week?
Oh, I expect that I'd be in it for more than just once a week. I'm willing to put that work in. I'd imagine this was between meetings and other regional commitments and opportunities. I look forward to doing it all.
All right. I guess, anyone else? We have one minute. Well, thank you very much for coming.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, council. Appreciate it.
Do you want to take the five-minute break, or? Because the next one can start at, in one minute, if you. Okay. Do you want to have him come in? Next is William Page.
Yeah, I know, I just saw Aaron, and I was like, maybe I don't want to know.
I mean, they're pretty delicious. I would take the opportunity. Sorry, I could do a better example.
I thought they were right out there. Have a seat, sir.
Let me get my timer here. Yeah, but that makes me nervous.
All right. Well, welcome.
Mayor.
So I'm going to read, so that I welcome everybody exactly the same way. Thank you for applying. To serve on the city council, we have reviewed your responses to our written questionnaire and additional materials that you have submitted. And if you don't make it this time, we have other boards and commissions, but you're already on another boards. But there are other boards. You will have 20 minutes to respond to six prepared questions, so please manage your time accordingly. And our first question is going to be from our Mayor Protam, Brian Wall.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. William, welcome. Thank you for applying. We're excited to hear your thoughts about the council position. First off is, you know, we know growth is coming. We've got a lot of preparation to do. How do we go about balancing quality of life with economic development?
Well, you know, when I think of that question, thank you for the question. When I think of that question, the thing that comes to my mind is thinking about what quality of life means, and both at home and outside of the home. And, you know, when I think of quality of life, what comes to my mind is, you know, what sort of infrastructure is present that's going to allow me to feel comfortable at home, whether it's, you know, the water, the infrastructure that, for the water department, or for sewage, or for being able to have 911 be present, you know, when I need it and don't have to worry about it. And outside of the house, same thing. Am I able to, is my quality of life, nice walks with my wife, you know, on safe roads, you know, through nice parks, you know, being able to enjoy myself in a clean Lake Ballenger, being able to go into the center of town and, you know, enjoy myself at some of the retail stores or some of the restaurants. And then, when we talk about the balance between, you know, economic development, I think that, that they know, I think feel that the council needs to keep in mind is, you know, that there are five groups that I feel that should, you know, be able to give the council some insight on their vision of the balancing between economic development and quality of life. The first one is the city employees. You know, why are they still here working at, in Mount Lake Terrace? What's keeping them here? And if the attrition rate is good, how do you make it better? And how do you improve upon that? And if it's not good, how do you fix it? Then you've got your current residents. You know, what is their vision of what they want from Mount Lake Terrace as far as quality of life and economic development, and what is their vision for what they want the city to look like, you know, in the future? Then also, I think that, you know, the steps that you have to take to balance that out is future residents of Mount Lake Terrace. I think that you have to, the steps you have to have is you have to have a, probably an aggressive, smart mechanism in place, marketing to find out, why does anybody want to come to Mount Lake Terrace? What are they looking for, for quality of life? What are they looking for for economic development? What are they looking for for businesses, homes, et cetera, that's going to want them, want to come to Mount Lake Terrace? Businesses, I think that's the fourth component. You know, I think that based upon the vision of the first three, then the council, the steps the council should be taken is going out and identifying those businesses that can come to Mount Lake Terrace, that can address those visions of our current residents, future residents, as well as the people that work here. And then we have to get businesses that are going to come here, they're going to grow here, and they're going to stay here. And I think lastly, you've got to get developers. You have to be able to share your vision of what we want Mount Lake Terrace to look like, and then we have to match that with developers that are like-minded. And we have to be able to have developers that want to work with the city to create a legacy of a vision that we have articulated, so that is there for our children and our grandchildren. Thank you.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, councilmember Sonmore.
Greetings. My question is a three-part series. What are your thoughts on city government spending priorities? How should we go about reducing costs when times are lean? And what city services do you consider a priority?
Well, thank you for that question. I think that, first and foremost, I think that from my experience since I've been here, that you've got some really good department heads and managers that are working for the city. And I think all of them, when the services that they provide to the city are doing what they're supposed to be doing, serving and protecting the residents of the city. And I truly believe that if you go and ask any of them, they will tell you that what they do and the services they provide are a priority. So I'm not going to mess with that. But I do think that when you talk about spending priorities from the government, they have to be proportional to what our residents need in the demographics of what the city looks like. And that, in my mind, can't be static. It has to be flexible, because as we know, this city is growing, this city is going to be a diversity hub, and the city council's got to be able, when they're putting their budgets together, to be able to be flexible enough to make moves without saying, well, we're not going to do this because we've never done it before. And as for when things get lean, you know, that happens to everybody. But I truly believe that when times get lean, they're not so bad if city government is being transparent daily, weekly, monthly, quarterly, annual summaries with those department heads that I said are very good department heads, so that as they are getting this information and they're part of this transparency, when things are lean, then they are ready to make intelligent decisions on what type of changes they need to make. And then, I believe that those changes, those recommendations on the type of cutbacks that need to be made, should be started first with those department managers. They're the ones who, when things are going good and things were moving along the way we wanted them to move, when we were growing and developing, you know, the city, you trusted them to do those things. So you need to also be able to trust them to make those thoughtful decisions on what needs to be done in their departments. That's where it should start, and then it should move up, you know, to the city managers and to the city council, where through reviews and conversation, then, and based upon proportionally where the priorities need to be set, you already have a ground base, a thoughtful ground base from those department heads on what they think should be done. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Councilmember Murray.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, William. So my question for you is what role do you think local government should play in addressing diversity, equity, and inclusion?
Thank you for that question. Not that I'm an expert on that question or not, but I think that first and foremost, government, our government, city government, has to believe and accept the fact that, excuse me, as I said earlier, Mount Lake Terrace is going to be a diversity hub, not just because the train station's there, but because people want to come here. And by realizing that, I think that what city government has to be willing to do, that every time there is a decision made that's going to be policy-minded, ordinance-minded, or that's going to affect the residents, whichever decision you may do, you've got to, I think, remember, I read something the other day that I'll share with you that said, diversity is being invited to the dance. Inclusion is being asked to dance. Equity is everybody enjoying the various moves that are being made on the floor by the dancers. And so I think that, you know, your role as the council has to be willing to accept that when decisions are being made, you got to look around the table and you got to ask the question, who's not here, and why aren't they here? And if you don't do that, then you don't have the right to say later, well, we did everything that we could possible, there's nothing else that we could do, and we've covered all the bases. Because when you don't do that, or if you're doing, making decisions that are rash because of events that occur, then the only people that are going to positively be affected are be affected are those that created that incident in the first place. But everyone else is going to possibly get missed, or others will get missed out, or they're just going to get crumbs. And I think that that is the most important thing that the government has to realize when addressing diversity, inclusion, and equity. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. So our next question is by councilmember Ryan.
Hi, William. For, to be a good city council member, what characteristics do you feel are most important?
Well, thank you for that question. I think that, first and foremost, they have to be honest, trustworthy, and has integrity from within. And that also has to be seen from others from without. I also believe that they have to be able to ask the questions, why and why not? They, how and how come? I think they have to have the courage to say, no, and not now. And I think that they have to have the humility to be able to say, thank you, and please. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. So next is councilmember Woodard.
Thank you, Mayor. I have your last question. Why would you be a good council member at this time, and why are you interested in being appointed?
Thank you for that question. First of all, I'll hit the bottom part of it, back part of it first. I'm interested in being appointed because I think it's an opportunity, and the opportunity is happening right now. I've always defined opportunity as being presented, when you're being presented with a challenge that you're ready for. When you're presented with a challenge that you're not ready for, it's not an opportunity, that's something other, okay? Why would I think I'd be a good council member at this time? Well, because I look at my progression since arriving here at Mount Lake Terrace, April 3rd, 2020, and the transition, the steps that I have taken, you know, to get to this seat right here, where I'm at today, you know, from my first interactions with the city, the former city clerk, you know, within like the first few weeks, my interactions in developing a relationship with the manager, the city manager, the city department head, city water, the water department head. And then my, you know, relationship, the next transition step was getting involved in developing a relationship with the city manager. And from that, I created a relationship with the chief of police, which led to relationships and them listening and us acting together to create change at the police department with this police officers, being able to be invited to be an assessor for the sergeant's exam. That was the next step. I think that being invited to be, go on a ride-along with a police officer, another step. I think that, and then participating and being involved in things around the city with the city council, you know, some of the open houses with new businesses, you know, with the mayor and various people, you know, various council members, being able to participate and volunteer in National Night Out and Tour de Terrace, you know, again, and the lighting of the tree and, you know, the dedication of this plaza, you know, and being able to sit there and being invited to the dance, you know, if you will, you know, when you did that. And then, just as recently, being part of some changes, you know, in policy, you know, commissions, all getting budgets, having three members of the council, you know, publicly stating what the purpose of the DEI is, you know, because of, you know, the voices that you heard, you know, being able to participate in a city council meeting twice from that platform over there, and being heard. And I think that all of those things have led to this transition of being able to sit here today, right now, that I would never have thought of myself being three years ago, four years ago, maybe even two years ago. So it's a natural transgress, transition of movement upward, I think, towards the council. And more importantly, in summation, I think, why I think I'm ready to be this, because my neighbors think so, my friends think so, my peers think so. But most importantly, you know, Ellen Lavoy, my wife, tells me that Mount Lake Terrace is ready for me to be city council member, and she is ready for me to be a city council member. And quite frankly, if Ellen Lavoy says I'm ready to be a city council member, then I don't see any reason why I should be thinking or acting otherwise. Thank you.
All right, we have three minutes left.
Okay.
And so the last question is, do you have any questions of us?
Since, right now, today and tomorrow, you have the opportunity to decide what type of council member is going to be sitting in the seat, from the city's perspective, for the residents of, it's a two-part question, for the residents of Mount Lake Terrace, what do you want for a city council member? And the other part of that question is, because we all can use improvement and self-improvement, what do you want from a city council member, the new city council member, for your own self-enrichment as a council member? Anybody?
Who would like to answer that? You can go ahead. Oh, go ahead.
Okay. First of all, you'd have to be able to take a snowball I threw at you at the tree lighting event.
You missed.
But, that's being light. But, seriously, a good listener and someone that looks at both sides of every issue.
Thank you. Anyone else?
That would have been my answer.
Okay.
Yeah, good answer. No, I think, yeah, I think somebody that is going to be a partner with each of us as a council to help us achieve our vision. I mean, that's, you know, for the community. And looking at, we have a vision, somebody that brings additional insight and perspective to help us not reshape, but help us grow our vision and achieve it. Has the energy to be able to help us get to where we want to go, help us get to where we want to go, and a team player that works together to get us there.
Thank you. Anyone else?
We have one minute. Anyone else? Councilmember Woodard.
Sure, I really appreciate that second question in particular. I think the first one, though, has been, what I've been hearing, and I would just say, I'd be looking for someone who's willing to operate outside of their own agenda. I don't think there's anything wrong with having an agenda, but if that's the only thing you see, I just don't think that's going to work very well for a city council. Our city's too small for one person to push that hard. That doesn't mean don't push that hard, which is the second part of that question. Expose me to what you think this place should be, especially if it doesn't look the way I think it should be. That's my charge, I would say, of anybody sitting in that seat and what I'm looking for.
Okay. Thank you. Is that about it? Well, Madam Mayor, and Mayor Pro Tem Wall, and city council members, as well as city manager, thank you for giving me 20 minutes of your time. Have a good night.
Thank you very much. Good night. Okay, do we want to take that five minutes?
Yeah, rest.
Okay, all right. Next will be eight o'clock.
Sure, you're welcome. Thank you.
Oh, yes, we need to do that. I had a time for.
Okay, yes. Thank you for having me here. Thank you.
Yeah.
Notice I'm ready.
All right, so thank you for applying to serve on the city council. We have reviewed your responses to our questions, our written questionnaire, and additional materials that you have submitted. And please, if you don't make it on this one, we have a lot of openings on our boards and commissions coming up.
Great.
Yes. So the first question is going to be asked by our mayor, Pro Tem Wall.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And Ned, great to meet you.
Thank you.
Welcome, yeah. Excited to, thank you for applying. We're excited to hear your ideas and thoughts about serving on the Mount Lake Terrace, the city council, starting with, growth is coming. And you're familiar with that from your, seeing the Linwood days and so interested in your insights as to how we here in Mount Lake Terrace should be managing that growth and balancing our quality of life with economic development.
Okay. Let me just start, can I make a statement first? To say, thank you for this opportunity to meet with you and to move forward on this process. As I submitted in my application papers, I first moved to Snohomish County about 42 years ago. And at that time, my wife and I bought our house in Linwood, and we lived there for over 20 years. And during that time that I was able to serve on the Linwood City Council for almost 10 years, and I thoroughly enjoyed it, I often reflect back on it, and I think it was a good time, I enjoyed it, I learned a lot. And so, and that's when this opportunity came forward, and I got to move forward on this again. For the past eight years, I've lived here in Mount Lake Terrace. And so I'd like to apply my knowledge and experience to this city council here at Mount Lake Terrace. And I, overall, I see my role as a council member of twofold, one of keep, both keeping an eye on the tomorrows and the future, but also on the todays and the present. Yeah. So you asked me about the balancing the economic and quality. I think that the city of Mount Lake Terrace has done a very good job of outreach to its citizens and to involve them in the decision-making process. I think the city of Mount Lake Terrace should continue to survey the citizens to identify what the economic balance and quality of life looks like to them. We should rely heavily also on the input from members of the staff who have the professional knowledge and background in the planning of economic development balancing with the quality of life. And we should also look to comparable cities for ideas and comparisons.
All right, so then our next question is by Councilmember Somer.
Got to remember, too, see, not alone. Mr. Daniels, my question is kind of a three-part. What are your thoughts on city government spending priorities? How should we go about reducing costs when times are lean? Which city services do you consider a priority?
Sure. I guess in government spending, we would need to determine what the adequate staffing levels are necessary for public safety, which is essentially police, fire, and code enforcement, the administration, and the city's infrastructure, which would include roads, parks, and recreation. Also, we'd have to determine what the adequate levels of maintenance are for the operation of the vehicles, machinery required to meet the needs of Mount Lake Terrace. The part, how should we go about reducing costs when times are lean? I think we would have to approach it by identifying the governmental mandates for operations and services, and then weigh that against programs that could be reduced without significantly and adversely affecting their existence. And which services do I consider a priority? Essentially, I've always looked at it, that cities tend to incorporate it for two main reasons. The first one is for a better public safety for its citizens, basically police and fire. And secondly, to better control their planning and zoning issues. Therefore, the city services I considered, among the top five would be police, fire, planning, parks and recreation, and public works.
Thank you. Thank you. Councilmember Murray, you're next.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Ned. Very nice to meet you and have you here this evening.
Thank you.
So my question for you is, what role do you think local government should play in addressing diversity, equity, and inclusion?
I like that question. Having worked for the Edmond School District as a substitute teacher for over 20 years, I have been in the classrooms of almost all the schools in the district, and I've seen significant growth in the diversity in the classrooms of the students from many countries and cultures, and all over the district. And I see the necessity for local government to provide programs for the historically underrepresented groups, and to provide access to participating in every aspect of society. I also acknowledge that the systems have marginalized groups from social and economic spheres of influence. So overall, local government must do its part to help create a welcoming atmosphere of inclusion and belonging to all its citizens. The Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Commission is certainly a good beginning.
All right, thank you very much. Councilmember Ryan.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Ned. Nice to see you.
Thank you.
My question is, to be a good city council member, what characteristics do you feel are most important?
I guess succinctly, transparency, honesty, a team player, problem solver, solution-oriented, and most especially, mutual respect for the other council members and their opinions. And also, having respect in working with the mayor, the administration, its staff, and the citizens. And also, I think that council members should be informed, thoughtful, action-oriented, and a progressive decision-maker.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Councilmember Woodard.
Thank you, Mayor. I have your last question, which is, what characteristics do you feel, oh, no, that was Rick's question, apologize. Why would you be a good council member at this time, and why are you interested in being appointed?
Good, thank you. I'm experienced in working as a council member, as I've told you a couple of times, having served almost 10 years in the Linwood City Council, from 1990 to 2001, a long time ago. And I fully understand the role and responsibilities of being a council member. I am older now, and I think a bit wiser in how I approach and best address the challenges of today and seize the opportunities of tomorrow. When I was on the Linwood City Council, I served as the representative on the board for community transit, and also on the then Snohomish County Board of Health. And in these roles, I saw firsthand the value of working cooperatively with the other cities and towns throughout the intergovernmental agencies. I also served for two years as chair of the then Association of Snohomish County Cities and Towns, and I did so in an effort to meet and know many of the mayors and other council members from throughout Snohomish County. I served there, so I could better understand the many issues facing my neighboring cities, and to develop a rapport with their elected officials, and to be more familiar with some of the interlocal agencies and interlocal agreements. I also enjoyed participating in many of the AWC conferences in order to learn how to be a better council member and do my job better. Particularly enjoyed going to those conferences. And now, as a member of the, as a resident, excuse me, of Mount Lake Terrace, I have a vested interest in the continued success of this city. As a semi-retired substitute teacher in the Edmond School District, I have the time to commit to the position of being a council member for both daytime and evening meetings.
All right, there is just one more question, since we have time, and that is, do you have any questions of us?
Not really, no. But I know if you had any additional questions. But I don't know if you had any additional questions for me?
We don't have any other questions to ask you.
Okay. All righty, well, I guess in closing, let me just say, thank you for this time to talk with you. I've been to a few of the council meetings and watched on Zoom, partly to understand whether I would feel comfortable and want to be involved in an environment like this again after a couple of decades. And yes, it got me going again. I feel like the firehorse ready to go. And so I look forward to being appointed and hopefully you make the appointment for me. So thank you for your time. Thank you.
Thank you. Good night. Do we want to see if the last person is here? There's one more, right? Is it William Moore? I don't know if they're out there. Yeah, so if we can, if we can do this one, 8:55 is when we would have ended. Oh, did you break your pen?
It's just me.
Is the last person here?
I mean, writing period, that's true.
Oh, okay, then.
Because the kids stole the pens and they explode.
She'll give you a new one.
This type of paper make, they're...